If we could have the roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Here.
Alderman Schiff. Absent. Alderman Genin.
Here.
Alderman Clark. Absent. Alderman Mayberry.
Present.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Present.
Alderman Tolanair.
Here.
Mayor Tom.
Here. Do the pledge allegiance, but also stay standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation of America and to the people who live in this small town.
Moment of silence, please.
Minutes of the October 9th, 2017 meeting.
Move to approve the minutes as printed? Second. Moved to second, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Reposed? Passes. Item six, we have Rock Island update. We have a couple items here. Books for kids trivia fundraiser. On Friday, October 27th, the Lauren Evans Watts Memorial Fund for the children's materials of Rock Island Public Library Foundation will hold a trivia night at the Quad City Botanical Center from 6:30 to 9:30. There will be a trivia play, Mulligans, Doubles, and Rent a Genius. Not me, Rent a Genius rounds. Light snacks may be brought in, but all beverages must be purchased at the cash bar. Donations to pay play is $10 per person. For more information and reservations, please call Kathy Valonic at 309-752-3014. Community crime prevention partnership meeting. Please join the city of Rock Island Police Department on Wednesday, October 18th, for their monthly crime prevention meeting. This month's topic will focus on introducing the new housing authority officer, Michael Wood. These educational meetings are intended to strengthen the partnership with the citizens of Rock Island and the police department. Meeting is scheduled to start at 6:00 PM at the community room of the police department at 1212 Fifth Avenue in Rock Island. Fright night in the district. Thursday, October 26th, by the way, it's my birthday. The Schwebert Riverfront Park will be full of spooky fun for children, including trick-or-treating, entertainment, live DJ, and a costume parade. The fun starts at 5:00 PM and goes until 8:00 PM. The first 500 children will receive a free goodie bag. For more information, please contact Rock Island Parks and Recreation Department at Thank you very much. Item seven. Is the presentation of the two... Oops, go ahead, you're all yours.
Presentation of the 2017 Labor Day Parade Board.
And if Grace Shirck could come up and kick this off, her and several other committee members, and Mary Chapel, and there could be some others here, worked hard at this effort, that's for sure. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. I am excited to be here again because we are such a blessed community, and we're one of the few around that has a good old-fashioned hometown parade, and I'm here to celebrate it with you, all the wonderful, or some of the wonderful entrants that are being recognized for that parade. You know, our theme was sing, and I want to sing, except I have a terrible voice, so I won't do that to you. I want to sing about the wonderful departments, volunteers, entries, and residents who make our parade special. And I do have a friend over there, Phyllis, who she could sing it, and it would sound a lot better than I was. But meanwhile, on behalf of the Rock Island Labor Day Parade Board, I would like to thank everybody for coming to tonight's presentations. Before we get started, I would be remiss if we did not say thank you to some of the people who helped make this parade possible. People like our wonderful Rock Island Police Department, who helped with traffic control, our Rock Island Fire Department, who was on-site to help and assist with any medical emergencies. Thank the Lord, we did not have any. We would like to thank Public Works for their support of the parade, including assistance for the streets and the engineering departments. And a very special thank you to Linda Moore, who was the city's general administration office, part of their office, and it was her organizational support that helped us with this event. This year's parade lineup include nine sponsored musical groups, which is a record for us. So thank you to the following businesses and people who helped to make those nine musical groups possible, because they gave donations. And people don't always know this, but we give them a $350 donation, donated by members of the public. And the reason we do that is a lot of them, the schools and so forth, they need busing to get the kids there, or to help feed them, or whatever is needed. We think it's a good thing to do. So, first, we would like to thank the Rock Island and South Rock Island Township Offices for sponsoring the mighty Metro Steppers from Martin Luther King. We would like to sponsor, or thank you, send a thank you out to McDonald's Restaurants of Rock Island for sponsoring Rock Island High School, Crawford Company for sponsoring Allman High School, Whelan Presley Funeral for sponsoring Rock Ridge High School Marching Band, Oars Mortuary for sponsoring the Davenport Central High School Marching Band, and a group of wonderful Rock Island residents for sponsoring Moline High School Marching Band, the Valla Perocity, I hope I said that correctly, shop for sponsoring John Mueller Band, the Quarter Till Tap and Splash Businesses for co-sponsoring Phyllis and the Sharks Band, and Hy-Vee for donating towards the lunch, luncheon that we provided for the University, Western Illinois University Marching Band. So please give a hand to all of those wonderful... Now, if any of you have a business or organization, I'll do my little sales pitch here, we would love to have even more than nine, and we would just love to have anybody out there who'd like to donate and help to make our parade possible. And you know, everybody loves the music, so it's wonderful to have lots of them. We would also like to thank the Rock Island Swim Team, they helped for carrying sponsorship and other banners throughout the parade, the Rock Island Clean and Beautiful Organization who passed out litter bags at the beginning of the parade. A very special thank you to Edison Junior High, who cleaned up after the parade for the first time, and they did a fantastic job, excellent. And then a special thank you also to Kate Wilfong McKinley, who served as the official photographer. And tonight, you're going to get some great pictures. If you miss the parade, you're going to see all the wonderful things you missed because of her efforts. So, a few years ago, we decided to start announcers in the parade, just to kind of let people know activities that are going on. We announce when the library has wonderful activities going on, and then we also announce as the entries go through. So usually, I'm one of the announcers, and then Bill Sowards and Brendan Sears are also the announcers this year, so we want to send a thank you out to Bill and Brendan. Additional thanks go to the owners of the various parking lots, which allow us to set up our booths, and Butch Boss of Electronics, who helps to make all of that possible. We are grateful to those who donate their open cars. We carry the Citizens of the Year. And how many cities do you know who celebrate the residents of our community for things they do throughout the year? And the city of Rock Island does that, because we have the best residents around, right? There we go. So this council recognizes that, and they thank them. And we choose select Citizens of the Year each year, and they become part of our parade. Invaluable support was there by the members of the Davenport Amateur Radio Club. Now, there are very special people who make this parade possible also. There's 85 volunteers that come together each parade day. You have a wonderful group of advisory board members, Art Milton, Grace Shirck, Sammy Montgomery, Bill Sowards, Edna Sowards, Kay Whitley, and Mary Chapel, who come together throughout the year to make this parade happen. And we have to give kudos especially to Mary Chapel and Art Milton, because this parade would never take place without them, and they need their own applause, right? And those other 78 additional volunteers who come together, you know, a lot of them are just family members and friends, and if you ever want to work the parade, we got a spot for you too. So just give Mary or I a call, and we'll make sure we find you somewhere to work in the parade, in the parade. Lastly, and most importantly too, we need to give a special thank you to this city council, because the city councils for the last 33 years have understood the importance of community events and community parades and thanking the residents. And so, give a hand to the city of Rock Island. You know, out of the 120 entries, 15 were government officials, 35 were organizations and clubs, 25 were businesses, seven were local churches, nine individuals and families that developed an entry, 25 schools, and multiple bands and musical groups. That's our parade, because we are an old-fashioned, home, old-fashioned, community parade. There we go. But last but not least, I have to thank you, and you, and you, and each and every one of you out there, all the citizens who come to the parade, all the people who participate in the parade, because that's what makes our parade special. All right, you're tired of hearing me, let's sit here, find out who won awards tonight, so that you know there's different categories. One is the citizens' choice. We go out into the community, and we give people the opportunity to judge who their favorite choices were. And those people are going to receive a ribbon tonight. I'm going to ask Mayor Tomes to come up here and present that ribbon to them, if he would. And what we're going to do, please, is have everybody in this group, we'll get up, and we'll wait till everybody's up from the citizens' choice awards. Mary's going to take a wonderful picture for press, and then we will turn around and have you sit down, and then we'll look at some other awards that we have available. Are you ready, Mayor?
I'm ready.
Okay, then we're going to start with the Kiwanis Club of Rock Island. Are you here, Kiwanis Club? Thank you again. The Kiwanis Club, this year's annual entry, and if you look up here, you'll get to see it, recognized two special people, Chris Ellsberg and Liz Lovelace. They were the recipients of two outstanding service awards from the Kiwanis, and joining the award winners on foot were other members of this important, child-focused organization. Next, we have South Rock Island Township, and I'm representing them, so hello. And we had the opportunity to decorate a truck, and you'll see it up there, and we had two very special guests. We had Olaf from the movie Frozen, and we had Chase from Paw Patrol, and it was a big hit with all the children in the parade and those watching the parade. So I'll stand over here and get our awards taken. This is the first time I got to do this. This is nice. Anyway, Quad City, 50's and Friends. Come on, I love they wore their outfits today. Glad to see this fun group of friends from Leclerc, Iowa, return to the parade this year with their 1953 yellow Ford truck and Coca-Cola-themed trailer. Several of these members were dressed, as you see them here tonight, and up on the screen there. And when I say that it's an old-fashioned community parade, shame on me for not mentioning that there's lots of neighboring communities like Leclerc, Iowa, Davenport, Moline, Rock Ridge, who put people in our parade too, and we're very grateful for that. So thank you. Okay, St. Mary's Catholic Church. Do we have a representative? This theme-based entry featured a truck and flatbed with several church members riding and walking. On the trailer was an amazing replica of the parish steeple that was surrounded by benches and greenery. The trailer also featured stained glass signs and a large hymno book that had a page that said, "Make a joyful noise unto the Lord." So thank you, St. Mary's. Okay, one of our wonderful grade schools, we have Francis Willard Elementary School. Come on down. I'm probably going to embarrass myself here, but I'll do it anyway. Following behind the Francis Willard banner this year, we had a large group of students, parents, staff, walking the route. Here is some of them coming up now. They were wearing their special Willard Wolf shirts, and they would stop every so often to do their school cheer. Are you going to help me? Come on, if I do it, you do it.
Do the little howl at the end, or the whole cheer?
You do the cheer, and I'll do the howl with you. Listen to this, this is what they did all the way along the parade route.
We do this, yeah, Mrs. Pentana, come on up, she's one of our lead teachers at Willard. And each morning, we do a morning meeting with all 350 of our students, and each morning, the students ask Mr. Clark or I, can we lead the song? Can we lead the song? So we'll say it, and you guys have to repeat it. Are you ready?
We can do that, right?
All right.
And I'm an alumni, so...
That's right. It goes like this. Willard is the place for me.
Willard is the place for me.
All day, every day, guaranteed.
All day, every day, guaranteed.
Leaders and learners, we shall be.
Leaders and learners, we shall be.
Woo! So, and we like to watch the kids, and we want the 350 students do that every morning is amazing.
And it was wonderful to see in the parade, absolutely wonderful. Okay, next, we would like to recog... Thank you for that. Next, we would like to recognize the Black family of Rock Island. When we talk about just families and friends getting involved, these guys are one of them. They turned around and took this creative family built, and they built a special red and yellow replica of the Rock Island Lines, and of course, what were they, song were they playing? The Rock Island Lines. Isn't that wonderful? So give them a hand. Thank you to each of them, as they were recognized by the citizens of Rock Island.
So, get to that crowd in there. There we go. That's right, you got to get yours up there. Let's get over here.
There's a blog post from Arcadia Press in August 2017 that listed the 10 most charming small-town celebrations for Labor Day, and Rock Island ranked number six.
For sharing that. Now, the city council each get to choose their favorite entry in the parade, so we're going to, this is in no order, just different council choices. So we're going to start with the Rock Island Horticultural Club. Tried to do that, Bob. Club members created a special botanical entry based on this year's theme. The entry featured a beautiful garden arranged on a flatbed with two floral people sitting on benches, singing Rock Island, the beautiful. So give them a hand. Isn't that beautiful? And Denkman Elementary School, do we have a representative tonight? We will make sure that somebody gets the award to them. The Denkman Timberwolves were represented in large numbers this year, with a big group of students, parents, and staff walking the route, and didn't they look great? Another council choice was the Church of Peace, United Church of Christ. This year's theme-inspired entry was based on, I'd like to teach the world to sing. They featured banner carriers and a flatbed boat, a float, on the float were church members in red shirts and a large globe, and a few members walked the route in traditional German garb in order to promote the Lederhosen 5K event that they were having at Schwebert Park. So thank you to Church of Peace. Terror at Skellington Manor. There we go. If you are a Halloween fan, you enjoyed this entry, the creators of Terror in the Woods attraction entered a truck and trailer featuring lots of creepy characters. The entry's banner and based theme read, "Sing Your Heart Out, Rock Island." So thank you to Terror at Skellington Manor. Two Rivers United Methodist Church. Once again, members of this active church presented another creative entry. First, there was the church banner, followed by members walking. Second, there was a decorated flatbed float with a pipe organ, complete with pipes at one end, and the church choir members sitting in the pew. They were, there were signs that shared the congregation's musical ministries, and a special sign that said, "Rock Island Sings at Two Rivers Church." Thank you again. Factory of Fear. We featured a truck and trailer full of all sorts of creepy scary characters. Many of them walked the route in zombie style, inviting parade watchers to visit their annual haunted house attraction. I might add that both of you, these organizations, you have one and continue to have stuff until October, October 31st, and same with my other ones? Yes. So go out and visit them if you like zombies and creepy creatures. Rock Island High School Football Team, I don't think we have a representative, because they're hard practicing, but they were very, very impressive. This was the first time that we had, that I know of, did Mary, do you ever know of, we had the entire football team. Their numbers filled half of a block. In the past, sometimes they'll send the freshmen, or just a few players. We had the entire team, so kudos to the team and our brand-new coach. So these are the council choice awards. Now, we have a very new award. It was Favorite Musical Entry. And what we did was, we invited different musical groups to come in, and we kind of set up a reviewing stand at the announcer's booth at 18th Avenue and 30th Street, and we allowed each group to perform for 45 seconds, not a long time, but they were also performing the rest of the route of the parade. In fact, one of them said she about lost her voice by the time she got to the end, singing over and over and over again. But this year's favorite choice, first and ever, and maybe it'll continue to be an ongoing award, goes to Phyllis and the Sharks Band. That is Phyllis up there, and Gary, and their daughter Whitney, she sings also. Next, we have the Parade Committee's Choice Award. Because we were doing it for so long, we finally thought, why don't we get to pick somebody that we really liked too? And so, we really liked this year, the Boy Scout Pack 250. I see lots of those wonderful young men out there. This theme-related entry featured the exciting world of being a Boy Scout. You had Pack 250 leaders and members in uniform. There was a camping tent on a flatbed, along with fishing poles. There were two flags, the American flag and the Pack 250 flag. There was a sign to remind us of upcoming popcorn sales, and best of all, there were lots of scouts, and they sang Boy Scout songs as they traveled the route. So thank you, Boy Scout Pack 250. Then the Grand Marshal this year, Stacy Fiddler, she got to choose her favorite entry, as Grand Marshals always do, and she picked the Ark of the Quad Cities. Do we have a representative from the Ark? This entry took this year's theme to heart, and it was created based on the movie Sing. The entry featured a flatbed with a silver skirt and a large musical note. A large sing sign was placed at the back of the float, and it was accompanied by music with representatives of the Ark who rode on the flatbed or walked along the route. So thank you to the Ark of the Quad Cities. All right, we have one more, and that's the Mayor's Cup. I guess we should let the mayor do something. So, so this year, he got to choose his favorite entry, and he chose the Moose Riders of the Moose Riders, Rock Island Moose Riders. So can we have the Moose Riders Cup? Members of the Moose Riders developed a really cool entry based on 1950's music. Their flatbed was decorated like a soda shop, complete with a jukebox. There was even a table with two sodas, all ready to go. Members of the Moose Riders rode on motorcycles of all sizes, and Tammy the Moose, Tommy the Moose, sorry, I changed that. Tommy the Moose was delighted, delighted all the young parade watchers. We appreciate the time involved with developing this special entry, and a thank you to all these special winners.
As people are leaving, I just want to do a quick reminder that school is out of session, so there are more kids out in the street than normal, so please be careful, watch for the kids.
And I would like to say real quick, how about one big round of applause for all those winners? This city has had this parade for 33 years, Lord Willen will have it for many more years, and we hope that this city will never forget that what makes us special is you, our residents, our people. Thank you.
Buddy, for your...
A little bit, yeah. Am I making any stupid faces?
Gee, they didn't want to stick around for that.
The exciting part.
Stick to the agenda, buddy.
Exactly.
He really wants to stick around for this.
Watch myself live every day, buddy.
Pay bills.
This is all improv, right here.
She, they didn't want to stick around for the rest? The exciting part.
Stick to the agenda, buddy. I said you were the end.
Exactly. You really want to stick around for this.
Watch myself live every day, buddy.
Pay bills.
This is all improv, right here.
All right, let's give this a try. How about item number eight?
A special ordinance establishing a handicap parking space on 20th Avenue next to the residence located at 1928 Nine and a Half Street.
Move to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark absent. Mayberry.
Aye.
Brigatus.
Yes.
Tallinair.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item number nine.
A special ordinance regulating parking on private property at 777 Jumer Drive.
Motion to consider suspend the rules and pass ordinance.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark is absent. Mayberry.
Aye.
Brigatus.
Yes.
Tallinair.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item number 10.
Claims A through D. A, report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of $1,418.23 to Damon Colvin of Rock Island, Illinois for general liability claim. B, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number four in the amount of $46,008 to Green Space Associates of Davenport, Iowa for the 2017 sod replacement program for services provided from September 8th, 2017 through September 30th, 2017. C, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number one in the amount of $331,871.07 to Langman Construction of Rock Island, Illinois for the Outfall Six Basin Separation Project for services provided from August 8th, 2017 through September 20th, 2017. And D, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number one in the amount of $331,871.07 to Langman Construction of Rock Island, Illinois for the Outfall Six Basin Separation Project for services provided from August 8th, 2017 through September 20th, 2017. And D, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number one in the amount of $118,943.28 to Tri-City Blacktop Company Incorporated of Bettendorf, Iowa for the 2017 Asphalt Street Milling and Patching Program for services provided from July 10th, 2017 through October 4th, 2017.
Move to accept the reports and authorize payments for claims items A through D as recommended.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Here none, roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark is absent. Mayberry.
Aye.
Brigatus.
Yes.
Tallinair.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item number 11.
Claims for the week of October 6th through October 12th in the amount of $1,213,564.43 and payroll for the weeks of September 25th through October 8th in the amount of $1,451,684.44.
Move to allow the claims and payroll.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Here none, roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark is absent. Mayberry.
Aye.
Brigatus.
Yes.
Tallinair.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 12.
ACH report for the month of September in the amount of $2,906,576.25.
Move to approve the ACH payments.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Here none, roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark is absent. Mayberry.
Aye.
Brigatus.
Yes.
Tallinair.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 12.
ACH report for the month of September in the amount of $2,906,576.25.
Move to approve the ACH payments.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark is absent. Mayberry.
Aye.
Brigatus.
Yes.
Tallinair.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 13.
Purchase card claims for the period from August 29th through September 27th, 2017 in the amount of $49,178.1.
Move to approve the purchase card claims.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark is absent. Mayberry.
Yes.
Brigatus.
Yes.
Tallinair.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 14.
Report from the Police Department regarding bids for the lease of undercover vehicles recommending the bid be awarded to Highland Toyota of Moline, Illinois for an annual total amount of $24,900 for the period of January 1, 2018 through midnight on December 31st, 2018.
Move to award the bid as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
For those here and listening at home, can someone explain where the money for this program comes from? Is this coming from the city budget?
The money for leasing the undercover vehicles is allocated from the drug fund, the federal drug fund.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark is absent. Mayberry.
Yes.
Brigatus.
Yes.
Tallinair.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 15.
Report from the Police Department regarding bids for the annual towing contract recommending the bid be awarded to the sole bidder, Quad City Towing Incorporated of Rock Island, Illinois at a total unit cost of $1,385 for the period of January 1, 2018 through midnight on December 31st, 2018.
Move to award the bid as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I believe that's very reasonable, the amount for towing. So they did a good job as far as taking the bids.
Good. Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark is absent. Mayberry.
Aye.
Brigatus.
Yes.
Tallinair.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 16.
Report from General Administration regarding a memorandum of agreement with Bi-State Regional Commission and the governments of East Moline, Mylin, Moline, Rock Island, Silvis, and Rock Island County, Illinois for contractual services related to the preparation and monitoring of a grant for Enterprise Zone Application Assistance.
Motion to approve the memorandum of agreement as recommended and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Chandler, are you here? So if I'm reading this memo right, I just want to make certain I'm just understanding, because last time we put this application in, or the most recent time we put this application and it didn't, didn't go through, there was mention of a firm. Are we using a firm this time that has more expertise in this or is it the same, same group?
So I should answer this. The mayor and I have been, that's why it came from General Administration. I mean, obviously Chandler's been involved too. So last time we put the application together ourselves, the last two times, and weren't successful. So this time we sought a firm that, the people that are successful always have a firm that puts the package together for them. And so there were two or three firms that have been successful 100% of the time. They, they and the rest of the panel interviewed, took a look at those and then ended up with one selection and brought them in for discussion and then that's the company that they're going to go with. But the contract will be held by Bi-State.
Okay, so they're, they're involved with it. When you say we, by we, is it we with Bi-State, the city with?
Yeah, so Bi-State coordinates it, but the actual people that make the decisions are the mayors and administrators and managers from the county, Rock City, Rock Island, Moline, East Moline, Silvis, and Mylin.
I'm glad to see this back up and sorry for bringing you up here, Chandler.
And it's a shared cost, each city.
Correct. Based on population. Chandler, I think there was another question here, I'm sure.
I just want to clarify something, I'm sorry. Is the Enterprise Zone, is that the entire city?
In this application, no. But reason why, we have to deal with some demographics to make it much more attractive to be approved. However, when we, when we get this approved, we can then expand it as well.
It is not the entire city though, of any of the cities. So it's 15 square miles amongst all of the cities. But it's all of the areas, typically all the areas that we want to hit for development.
And then the second question I had was, is the sales tax abatement local sales tax?
It's all sales tax.
Okay.
That's a big, that's a big advantage, so it's state also.
And had all of the other listed cities and counties signed this agreement?
They have not all signed it yet. So this week it's going to a couple of municipalities and everyone's on board with it, so I.
I think it's great.
And so next month, there will be a public hearing, there has to be a public hearing for an enterprise zone, not just in Rock Island, but overall. And then there'll be an actual ordinance and an agreement on the actual enterprise zone that will come before all of the communities and it will be November 20th for us.
We'll vote on it November 20th.
Right.
Public meeting will be before that.
And then all the cities are going to vote on it over the next week then, at that point.
Thank you.
There's no further discussion, we need a roll call.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark is absent. Mayberry.
Yes.
Brigatus.
Yes.
Tallinair.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 17.
Report from the Police Department regarding the hours for Halloween Trick or Treat recommending Tuesday, October 31st, 2017 from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM in the city of Rock Island.
Move to approve the trick or treat hours as recommended.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Item 18.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a request from Tom Trumberger for rezoning from an R3 one and two-family residence district to an R6 multi-family residence district at 1103 25th Street.
Move to approve the rezoning request as recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Item 19.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a request from Marvin Hubble to vacate a segment of 42nd Avenue right-of-way, also known as Shore Acres, at Lot 67 Shore Acres.
Move to approve the vacation request as recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those, oop, roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark is absent. Mayberry.
Yes.
Brigatus.
Yes.
Tallinair.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 20.
Report from the mayor regarding an appointment to the Human Rights Commission and a reappointment to the Rock Island County Metropolitan Mass Transit District.
Move to approve the appointment and reappointment as recommended.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Virgil, you want the names?
Yes, thank you for reminding me, if we could have, yes.
See, it happened, I don't know. But it's Vern Sokan, Sokan, excuse me, for the Human Rights Commission and Berlinda Taylor-Jamison for the MetroLink.
Tyler.
Yes, made of Tyler Jameson. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That's it. Item 21. Other business.
I'd just like to make a reminder and announcement that the third ward meeting will be on Monday, October 30th, for the third ward residents and general public as well. It'll be held at 6 o'clock at the Hallberg Civic Center on 24th Street. Everybody's invited.
And on November 9th, it's a Thursday, at Denkman Elementary School, the seventh ward will be having their meeting with city staff present and we'll have the ballet Quad Cities in the gym for any families to want to bring their kids to be entertained for an hour.
Great job. Anything else for the good of the cause? Item 22.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
So moved.
Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed or adjourned?